So, good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Spada, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the December 3, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to Order. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast to the town's YouTube channel and also via Zoom by the Needham Channel and is being recorded for publication later viewing and administrative purposes. All materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov. And I'll call the roll for the record. When I call your name, please say you're present. Paul Alpert?
Aye.
Artie Crocker?
Aye.
Justin McCollin?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
And the staff, Lee Newman and Alex Clea are here with us tonight. So, our agenda tonight, we have one public hearing tonight, the major project site plan permit, number 2024-03 for PEX, for PEX, either one, Health and Fitness at 1451 Highland Avenue. The request for permit extension, which was our second item, has been canceled. And then, we have a meeting minutes, report from Planning Board and Board Members and Correspondence. So, we're, one thing that I just want to remind everyone is that the last meeting, we were just taught, we had such, so much to talk about and a lot of great information, but we started talking over each other. So, I just want to make sure that, let's get, let's get all of the comments through the chair so that at least we can each speak individually. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to open the hearing on major project site plan?
Second.
Okay, so who moved it and who? Justin moved it, second by Artie. And, yes? So, the waving of the motion by Adam, second by Artie. And so, with that, we'll ask the petitioner to come up regarding the proposed op-
We need to vote on that.
Oh, we need to vote on it, sorry. So, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Great. Adam, did you say aye?
I did.
Okay, perfect. So, it's unanimous. And that's for both of them? Or do we need to?
We don't need a motion to open the hearing.
Yes, we do. We need a motion to open, yeah.
And then the motion to waive the notice.
So, a motion to waive the notice?
Yes, we voted that.
And we voted that too. Okay, perfect. So, we'll have the petitioner come up. Please introduce yourself and your team and, hi.
My name is David John Grasso. I represent PEX with my colleague Cory Blaustein. PEX is applied for, well, let's start at the beginning, PEX is planning on leasing, or they've entered into a lease agreement for space at 1450 Highland Avenue, which was formerly a Ponchos Taqueria. In connection with their proposed use, they've applied for four special permits, three special permits pursuant to section 3.2.2 of the town and Needham zoning bylaws for use. One of those uses will be, one of those special permits is for a personal fitness service establishment use. One of the special permits is for accessory uses related there too. And one of the special permits is because the building's a multi-use building and there's more than one non-residential use. They've also applied for a waiver, special permit for a waiver for strict adherence to the parking requirement pursuant to section 5.1.1.6. So, in connection with the uses, PEX is a boutique, successful operator of individual personal training, fitness locations, gyms, health clubs. And what they're focused on as we detail in the application is one-on-one personal training, small, small group classes. And it's clear from what their proposed use is that their use will be less intense than Poncho, Poncho Taqueria's use. They'll just have less people there than Ponchos did in the same, same space. We know that PEX's use is, is, you know, comports with the center business district because they have a location literally across the street that was approved by this Planning Board for use, you know, a few years ago, so. But in connection with their, their request for a parking waiver, I'd like to point out that Ponchos Taqueria was granted a parking waiver in 2019. And at the time, Ponchos, it was determined that Ponchos needed 23 spaces to operate in that space. And at the time in 2019, the, the building at 1450 Highland Ave needed, I believe, 94 spaces. And in 2019, the building had access to 48 spaces. There were 40 spaces through an easement with Walgreens, which butts 1450 Highland Ave, and there were eight spaces at 1450 Highland Ave. So, Ponchos requested a waiver for 46 spaces. In connection with PX's use or PEX's use, it, no matter how you look at the, the requirements, PEX only needs 15 spaces as opposed to 23 spaces for Ponchos. And today, as opposed to 2019, 1450 Highland Avenue has access to 60 spaces, not, not just 48. There's, there's still the 40 spaces from Walgreens, eight spaces on the site. And recently, the owner of 1450 Highland Avenue has entered into an easement agreement with the owners of 15 Highland Place, which is behind the building, for 12 more spaces that all of the occupants can use at 1450 Highland Avenue. So, in connection with parking, PEX would only be requesting a waiver for 26 spaces as opposed to 46 spaces. So, the parking, you know, obviously would be, would be less intense and would be better for the town in that regard. So, in light of, light of the fact that PEX has, has shown that they're compatible with the, the uses in town, in that location, and the fact that they're going to be using less, less spaces than Ponchos, we, we request the necessary special permits.
Okay, thank you. I'll recognize the comments from the town entities and I have a question for Lee. It's police has no issue, building inspector has no issue, fire department has no issues, engineering has no issues, board of health, they require a demolition review permit and then a pass control. And then, my understanding is that, that there is additional information about the parking that you have, Lee?
Yeah, I think that I apologize for not calling you earlier about this, but I know it's not, it's not a game changer, but I just want to call out the fact that when Ponchos came in, they did get eight parking spaces approved on the site. Five of the parking spaces were located parallel to the building, three of them were behind the building. When they came in with the asphalt drawing for it, they only got, there were only seven parking spaces provided. That was four along the building edge and three in the rear. So, our approved site plan currently basically just shows seven parking spaces on that property at those locations. So, I think the waiver would just have to be modified to reflect that the existing site plan, if it's approved on that property, only has seven parking spaces on it, so the waiver would be for one additional space and we would maintain the approved site plan that we currently have. They haven't requested any changes in terms of the design profile that was approved.
So, I'm going to open up for a number of questions.
I just have one question. I, I don't know if it matters, but are you moving across the street or are you opening a second location directly across the street?
Opening second location.
So, you're going to have two locations on Highland Avenue. Then I have a question for Lee. I guess, and I'm confused because you mentioned in your letter that we have a requirement of a maximum of 2,500 square feet. I did not find that in the bylaw, so I don't know whether it's important or not.
I think it's in the definitions section.
It's in the definitions section, it's in there.
Okay. So, we've got one operator with two locations directly across the street from each other. If you combine them, it's more than 2,500 square feet. So, what? So, I just, I don't know if we should have a problem with that or not. I mean, it's, you know, if you took the space next door and tore down the wall, you'd have more than 2,500 square feet, so is-
But aren't there two separate buildings with two separate requirements and they already have approval for the first one?
I guess the question is what's the reason for the 2,500 square foot?
I thought it was about parking.
Well, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't even know why that requirement is in the bylaw.
It was to create, basically allow for only, I think the idea was to have only small fitness facilities in the center or, and to, and to allow it by, and to basically specify what was small. So, small was something under 2,500, it was something with 15 or less clients. I think the view was-
You've got five small fitness facilities in a one-block area.
Well, I think it was for each individual, I mean, I think it was for each individual establishment within a physical space, not connected.
I raise the issue, if the Planning Director has no problem, I have no problem.
I don't think it was intended to preclude what they're proposing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I don't see an issue with it, two separate addresses for one thing. I just wanted to clarify, I, for a second, I guess, for a second, I heard you say, five minutes ago, I heard you say something about a waiver of 25 spaces. What do you see, what are you seeking a waiver for?
I think it's 26 spaces is what, what we requested, although that may be impacted by what we had mentioned.
But you also mentioned that you only need 14 spaces. I mean, I don't have an issue, I just, I just want to clarify.
Oh, for sure. So, so, in 2019, there, there was a requirement for Ponchos to have 23 parking spaces. So, PEX only needs 15 parking spaces because their use is different in that specific space, in that specific area of Needham, of course. So, now, because in 2019, the, the building, due to its mixed uses, the different uses in the building, there's a, there's a Newton-Weldsey Hospital use there, there's a treat and there's Rockwood Trust, I believe. And so, in 2019, they, there was a requirement of 94 spaces and they only had 48 spaces at their disposal, so they needed 46 spaces, you know, waiver for 46 spaces. Now, we only need a waiver for 26 because we have 12 more spaces, you know, behind, you know, we didn't have those spaces in 2019, and we, we only need eight less spaces, so there's a difference of 20 spaces.
Okay, so you're just going down the math and what you additionally have available, not what you need, not what you need.
Correct. Yeah, we only need 15, but the whole building needs-
The space needs less and then they've added parking based on easement so that they have more parking.
I, I have no clue.
So, Justin?
I support this petition's request for permits in these case. I know questions.
And Adam?
I generally don't have, don't have a problem. I do have some questions. What's this, what's this size, how many square feet are in this location that you're applying for?
1950.
1950. I didn't see that on the, on the plan unless it was missing.
It was in the letter?
In the right-
Yeah, I have it here.
And in terms of the operation, and if you want to come to the, to the table, you can be able to answer the questions.
And, just to let you know, the, all the information on the operations is also in the letter here.
Thank you.
So, it's the maximum number of staff on the premises at any given time will be five. Most of the trainers will be working on a part-time basis, four to six hours a day. So, that some trainers will work morning only and other trainers will work afternoons only. So, all the information was here, five to, five to 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM or later is usually the, when most of the training is happening. And all services will be by appointment only. So, there's a significant amount of information here in the letter.
So, when you have that staff on site, and each staff has one, has one client, so it's a one-on-one relationship, so there would be a total, how many people at the, at the, largest ship, so to speak?
So, there'll be sort of a mixed use, so there will be moments where there are small groups, but during the moments where there are small groups, there won't be that one-on-one training presence. So, if there's a small group going on, it's like one or two coaches and maybe four to six clients. Outside of that timeframe, there'll be four to six coaches with one client. So, at any given time, there will be more than 10 people. It just depends on the hour and what type of session it's going on.
And then, you're saying there won't be any more than 10 people there?
Hopefully, we could get up to 15 from a revenue standpoint, but from a parking standpoint.
So, where, I mean, approximately, where would you like it to be, 15 or 20, 25?
Just depends, depends on the time of day and the session breakdown. But yeah, I can, I can, a medium, consistent flow is regular, it's kind of the goal, but.
And across the street, what do you operate at your, at your greatest peak?
So, across the street, to the point of the letter, it's busy from 5:30 in the morning until nine in the morning and then 4:00 PM until seven.
How many people do you have, what's the greatest number of people you have?
We'll have six coaches with one to two clients each.
To 12?
Yeah.
And here across the street, you know, you'd like to get up to 20 or 25?
20 would be the max, just the size of the space, yeah. But, and that won't be that frequent either. That'll be like kind of peak, kind of group hours, if it's like 8:30 in the morning, probably 6:00 PM at night.
And is that what you're doing?
Yeah, well, I'm curious about, not worried about it, but I think, Lee, what you're saying is, you know, there are seven parking spaces for those, for all of those people.
Well, there's seven, on the property itself, I mean, there are seven parking spaces. They have a lease, I think, with Walgreens for-
For an additional easement.
And then there are, then there's a parking lot just further behind that, I think it's nine spaces on the ground.
Right, is that near behind food deals or places?
And then, with, with the coaches who work at our facilities, we purchase parking permits through the town and we all park in the Chapel Street lot, so-
Great.
We won't even, we won't even be in that mix.
Right.
I think it's probably on that lot.
It's, you know, we'll definitely hear on Facebook, like we hear sometimes, we have too many barber shops or beauty shops in the center. Now, we're going to, there'll be, I expect to hear some of that, but, you know, it's a reflection of the market, you have the opportunity for it. I don't see any reason to deny any of these special permits at all. And, you know, it seems like a very good use and, you know, best of luck.
I don't have any questions either. I think I've, you know, you've addressed them here and I agree, wellness is a good thing. So, with that, we need to open up for public comment. Yeah, so, before we open up for a public comment, I'd like to remind attendees of our ground rules for public hearings to ensure an accurate public record and to enable a fair platform to hear from our neighbors. Please state your name and, and address clearly for the record. Please keep your remarks to three minutes so we can hear from as many people as possible. Please address your comments through the chair. Simply saying that you agree with the previous speaker is a great way to have your voice heard while making time available to hear from other neighbors. And then, unless a question can be easily answered by a board member, staff, and the applicant, we may ask staff to note your question so we can review, consider, and subsequently answer it. And you can also provide comments in writing by email to planning@needhamma.gov. And with that, let's see if there's anyone, the attendees, that has their hand up? And is there anyone here that has their hand up? It doesn't look like we have any comments, so with that, are there any final Planning Board member comments or questions or should there be a motion to close the hearing?
Is our decision going to require that they have parking from the town? They mentioned that they'll be getting parking stickers from the town.
Yes, well, we normally do that as a condition in the decision.
And how do you determine the number of parking?
We usually base it on the number of staff.
Okay. So, that will be in our decision. Good, thank you.
I just want to actually, how well does that work? More of a curiosity, how well does that work as far as purchasing permits from the town, parking facilities, spaces? How well does that work?
It works well.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Paul moves to close the hearing and, Justin, he sounded a little louder.
Seconded. Any questions or comments? So, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so the motion carries, thank you very much. And so, we'll have the decision on the December 17 meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great success to you guys.
Yeah.
Why you're successful at town management? It is.
So, with that, as I mentioned before, we, we canceled number two, the request for the permit extension because it happened on its own, organically.
As long as you guys all concur with George, he wanted to be sure that you guys are on the same page. Yeah, well, it's the law, so.
Yeah, Chris is, Lee is.
I guess we'll agree with the law.
It's the law.
He's right, so.
The permit extension, so. The third, the third time they've done it.
I find it interesting that legislature, I mean, this isn't the first time that the legislature has passed a statewide permit, permit extension.
No, they did during COVID.
They did during COVID, but we're past, we're, we're well past COVID.
No, I know.
And, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm, I'm sure nobody has the answer tonight. I'm curious as to why, why the Commonwealth.
Because of the economic issues that are, the developers are not developing anything at this time.
So, it's the developer's lobby that wanted to extend the permits.
I don't know for a fact, but it seems to me that financing is really high and that they're probably creating opportunities so that there's no huge backlog. I don't know.
There's still a lot of, you know, I mean, they still haven't- I think we're going to have that forever.
Probably. I haven't heard anything. I think that's supposed to expire in March 2025, so.
Yeah, but it's a technology, it's a technology-
I'm sure they'll do something, but they haven't-
It's a technology that works well.
And it allows for more participation.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, I didn't see any meeting, it says meeting minutes, I didn't see any meeting minutes.
Nope, I didn't see that.
No, we don't have them. We, I think we put them as a placeholder, we thought we might.
So, I move that we approve all the minutes that are around. I second that.
So, the next one is the report from the Planning Director and Board Member, so, Lee?
Okay, so today I participate, I'm preparing the application to go into the Executive Office of Housing and Little Communities on the zoning that we adopted because we've al, we've already submitted the zoning, you know, to the AG's office, it was approved at town meeting, and I'm preparing the package to go into the state, you know, for the town's, for our review and determination as to whether or not if the zoning ultimately stays in place, whether it's going to be compliant or not. We did have a brief meeting this afternoon with representatives of the state, I was in attendance, Kate Patrick was there, Chris Heath, Katie King, representatives from the state and the AG's office, just to speak about, you know, what the, what the status of the town's not having zoning in place at the end of the year will be. And it was confirmed that as of December 31st, we will be out of compliance. So, that's just, that's the status of things.
Have they, have they set a date for the election yet?
Yes, I think it's the 14th of January is the date of-
So, we're only talking about two weeks. I would, I would hope that for two weeks, the various state entities that give the grants will just let our applications sit for two weeks and see what happens with the vote.
Are they going to aggressively pursue non-compliant?
No, we didn't ask that.
Meanest values or are they just going to go, go after the ones that are, are-
We didn't ask that question. I think we asked the question about what would our status be? And then, we talked about, we asked questions about what would our status be during, if the petition were successful, what would our status be during the timeline between when we, between January 14th and the time we were able to actually effectively have a town meeting? And so, it looks like that is going to be a non-compliance situation as well, although Chris Heath raised the question about asking to consider, you know, the requirements of chapter 40A, which basically says that zoning is really effective back to the date it's adopted by, to the date of the public hearing. Would that impact how they were viewing our compliance or not? We didn't get a definitive answer on that.
It's just an argument, it's next, but it's, if they deem it uncompliant, it can't suddenly then be compliant. So, that's all is expected.
So, that's moving forward. I hope to submit the application tomorrow with all the documentations. And they indicated that they would be able to get us an answer, they, they will prioritize our situation and try to redo a review of our submittal to let us know our status. And the other thing that, that I think, when we're moving forward- Maybe just make sure that the, the submittal is the actual application that we would do that would move forward if, after the vote, it stands, right? Well, the, the submittal is what we did at town meeting to make sure that the zoning is compliant with the act. And so, we'll get a read from the state as to whether or not the zoning we adopted is compliant.
Will they do that in December or will they?
They're going to do that, they said with, if I submitted tomorrow, they're going to try to do it quickly for us.
Okay. So, if, if the vote is to maintain what town meeting did, then we would be still within compliance, right?
You would be, if, yes, we would be in compliance.
We just have the two weeks of non-compliance. If, if the vote is to go to town meeting, then we would be in compliance for possibly two and a half, out of compliance.
Oh, yeah, special term.
Right, it would be a special, it would be a special town meeting probably the end of February, the beginning of March.
Okay, and then you would have to rescind the application because at that point it was not adopted?
Well, at that point, the town would have to decide what they wanted to do. And if you decided, for example, to go forward with the base zoning that passed at town meeting, we would go through the normal process under zoning, you know, to advertise that, hold a hearing, have town meeting vote on it. And then again, after town meeting acted, that zoning would then go to the Attorney General for his review or her review and approval. And we would also submit that proposal to the state for determination for compliance. But in both, we did do a pre-application, we did do a pre-zoning, you know, review with the state, and they reviewed both the base plan and the neighborhood plan.
And they both comply.
And they were both compliant with some minor tweaks we had to make, and we made those tweaks to what was adopted, so.
So, both of them, okay.
So, you said the town would have to decide what it wants to do, isn't it up to this board?
This board would have to decide.
Correct.
Once the vote takes place.
Yes, once the vote takes place.
So, we're, we're waiting for this vote, you, you submit it, we're waiting for the vote, right? And then, once the vote takes place, then this board would review.
Right, if the recall, if, if the recall petition is successful-
Correct.
Then it's up to this board to decide how we move forward with the, with the, with proposal.
Correct. Correct. So, for now, we're just sitting tight, waiting until the vote. Okay.
But we can, I mean, we, I mean, if it, if something does happen where we have to have a special town meeting, we can, we can, if the select board has to decide, we're going to have to do something, select board has to do something, we could bring something fairly quickly, you know, depending how quickly we can go through the process of what we want to bring back.
Right, but we need to see if we need to go through that process.
No, I understand that, but I mean, we can know, we could kind of have a sense in advance exactly what our steps are and how quickly we can go through those steps to try to bring, you know. Is, is it two weeks or is it a month? You know, can we bring it back in a month, have a special town meeting?
Yeah, well, I think town meeting warrant is the longest, is the factor that, the longest, if you're looking at a NAC chart. But we have to have a hearing. Right.
Right, we have to have a public hearing.
We have to have a public hearing.
So, we have to pass something here-
Right.
To send to the select board, to send back to us, schedule a public hearing.
Correct.
And then, after the public hearing, we have to then vote on what we're actually going to send to town meeting and send that to the warrant committee to post.
That's why it's mid-February to early March, right? Depending upon that timeline.
That's, right. What's that? You're going to miss all the sport, right? Yeah, no, I'm not.
No, he's here till-
I know, but like, this is the stuff that, you know-
He's going to leave with a bang somehow, one way or another.
So, I, I guess my question is, do we want to take the time to consider prior to January 14th, what we, what we may want to present if the, if, if it turns out that the neighborhood plan is voted out? Or do we want to, or do we not want to waste our, you know?
I don't think we want to waste your time because if it doesn't pass, then-
Well, then we're good.
And we're-
It does actually merit some discussion. It's, it's, it can only be a range of things. But to clarify for a second, Paul, what you said, it's not that they vote out, that they would vote out the neighborhood plan, if their vote is successful, the whole thing is gone.
No, because that's what passed.
That, that's the way it was-
The neighborhood plan passed.
Right.
But, but before that, the base compliance, so it's not like-
Yeah, but what ultimately was passed was basically the neighborhood plan.
Yes, but that, but I just wanted to be clear that, you know, we don't revert to a past-
That's true.
Base compliance.
That's why we have to get started. I mean, legally, technically, we're starting from scratch.
So, I-
But I would imagine that we're starting from the base plan.
So, so that's the point, which is, the range is between the neighborhood plan and the base plan and anything in between. I, I had heard that the- I, I had heard, but the, I was curious if you have any indication, from the organization that, uh, sponsored the petition, uh, uh, for the referendum, um, I, if, is it true that they would, that they have articulated to you or to anyone that they would, um, they would support the passing of what would have been the base plan?
Haven't had any conversation.
Was that just hears?
There is just capacity, there is just the capacity of the town, which is unrelated to some degree to the numbers of units, it's more of, they don't believe that the, this is what I understood, but maybe I'm wrong, that, that some of the capacity, the school capacity and some of the other capacity measures are, need more studying.
So, statements that were made on social media and through press releases have indicated that there would be support from this organization for the base plan. Whether that, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, that's based on what they have submitted and what they have posted, that they would support compliance.
So then the, the capacity issue is for the added units, because they're, they're afraid of more units not having enough, that there's not enough information for capacity.
There was concern over the capacity of our school system in the district, and there's, and there's concern about the infrastructure, both from a stormwater management, uh, as well as, um, traffic, um, traffic management.
And, and, and as a right for the larger one versus the base one, I mean, the base plan that town meeting voted overwhelmingly with support, we know that, overwhelmingly.
That was as a right, that's as a right too, what do you mean?
Two, two things that.
No, 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 the, you know, the issue, the issue being, that I heard is that, the issue with the neighborhood is, is the increased capacity, but also the, it was also as a right, everything is as a right versus having the, having some little bit more oversight over.
Special permit.
Yeah, special permits, larger, increased capacity, increased building, that, that's what I heard.
But there was as of right on the, on the first three floors on Cheshla, um, it was the, to, to go four and a half was the, you know, was the as of right.
Yes.
Well, that's interesting, I wonder if we can, well, I'm sure we can't get a sense of the, of the sense of the objecting parties, but if we went to the base plan as a right and had everything that we had in the neighborhood plan, but all of that, all of those additions were by special permit?
I don't think we could, that's the whole thing with, with the whole, the, the, the state doesn't, they want to get rid of the special permit process, because they want.
But, but the as of right meets it.
The as of right.
But, I mean, the, the base meets it, so what you're saying, but I think right now, to tell you the truth, we have that as a special permit for the overlays anyway.
A part of it, yeah.
Yes, we go to four, or four and a half.
We have it, but we don't have it down to the ground floor, so, I mean, I mean, you, Paul, you're right, I mean, if the base plan is passing, then, we could look, the town at some, over the course of the next year could look at a higher density by special permit.
I think.
Had the base plan passed, so the rig of compliance.
And, and we're supposed to get information from the schools also in December, right, we're supposed to get the final master plan from our schools, I don't know if that helps or anything, I'm just.
Well, I, I mean, I think, you know, we know, the town needs more housing, needs more housing, the issue, the issue wasn't how much more housing, the issue was the fear that people were having that it's just gonna happen without any oversight, these is all by itself. Um, I never believed, I don't believe it was all going to occur even over twenty years, but that's where the fear was. I think if we had the base, if, if, if the, if the vote succeeds in January, canceling everything back, to come in with a base, then we, then it's, I think it's our duty then to say, what else do we have to do to find ways to increase more housing? Which would be acceptable, which would pass the town, which is for next year, pass the town.
So I have a question that probably nobody here has the answers, but if we went back to the base plan, if, if we had to go back to the base plan, what happens with the Carter Building?
That whole project go away?
No, it's, it's in the, it's in the base plan, it's in the base.
It's in the base plan.
What it was, it was.
So, okay, so they could go forward with that project at the Carter Building.
Yes.
Under the base plan.
Yes.
Yes, that's why we did it in vote. Okay, so. But they passed it pretty unanimously.
It was, it was really unanimous.
So it's interesting now how town meeting will roll, now that they've been, I don't know, um, you know, I, I'm trying to choose some sort of tongue-in-cheek remark that's appropriate to say on camera. But now that they've, um, you know, they've been called out on their, on, on, on a vote, I think they're gonna be a little careful, and I don't think necessarily there will be the same ayes and, and perhaps nays, uh, you, you're gonna get a different vote, I think, this time around. You're, you're gonna get, you, you're not gonna get the same people voting the same thing.
Even on the base plan?
I think, I, I.
You don't know.
I don't know, but it's fifty, we have to get fifty percent, we, we know, but we got fifty percent, I don't know, I mean.
I don't think, I don't think we get the same vote on the, on the neighborhood one, I, I.
Sure, but I, I.
My fear is that it might.
I've spoken to some folks that, that, that said that they would, they potentially could change their vote.
Yeah.
I didn't ask what the vote was, you know, et cetera, but you're, you're, you now have a legislative body that's now been called out, and they're gonna be scrutinizing zoning now from now on, 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 probably a higher level of scrutiny.
Yep.
Um, because, which is fine, which is public engagement, because people will be, town, the town will be using the emails they'll be sending out, there'll be a lot more public engagement from town meeting perspective. There'll be a lot more debate about whether you, if you are voted as a town meeting member, what is your obligation, do you vote for your own thought, or do you vote by, the whole Doug Fox argument, what do you do? You know, Doug Oates always saying, I'm gonna vote by whatever anyone tells me to do in my district, because I'm a representative, rather than, I'm voted by someone and I'm gonna vote my own conscience based on, so those types of debates are gonna happen, there's gonna be a lot, I think it's gonna be different going forward.
I agree, I completely agree.
Well, it should be, if it gets, if it gets, right, because we have a different situation. I think, I think, um, that, that two-thirds changed, the change from two-thirds to the majority, right? Makes everyone.
Yeah, you.
Makes everyone nervous to get this two thirds, right?
This type of zoning now, like, in the future, if we try to make tweaks, that's two-thirds, and, you know, we're not gonna, you know, like, I think there's gonna be a higher threshold, if we say we're gonna deal with Percy later on, and we're gonna deal with oth- other things that are not under the N B T A Communities Act, that we don't, and if we say we want first-floor commercial, that's not gonna be able to hit the threshold of the, of the one-half.
But the, but the one-half, that wasn't just the N B T A community, that, that was all, all zoning, all public, all.
All housing, house, housing is.
Yeah, all housing.
Even if we, if, even if we delineate the first-floor commercial.
No, yes, that is, that is two thirds.
That is two thirds, right, exactly, so, so, so that's the thing, what do we want to do, we want to do first-floor commercial, you know what I mean, that's, that's what we want to, but that's, we're going back to a higher, higher threshold that it's gonna be.
But when we're dealing, the thing is, when we're dealing with commercial on the first floor, there, there's a lot of propensity, I think, to where people like that, they like first-floor commercial, where, you know, retail, second, what's from housing, they like that mix going on.
Well, that's here from the, I mean, we have tons of community meetings and, and, and we're at this moment where, let's see how people vote, and then let's, you know what they have to say, like, how, how, you know, because it is for the community and.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're speaking up in a different way.
I agree.
So, okay, so with that, um,
and also, I think the other thing I want to say, we need to point the light how special committee, um, we're gonna try to get the first meeting scheduled for December, um, during the week of the sixteenth. Um, and so just to kind of build on that, um, right now, for the next planning board meeting, the only thing we have scheduled is, um, the decision on this project we just heard. Um, if it stays that way, um, we're gonna put a feeler out, would you guys be interested in just doing a meeting on Zoom to get that approved, and that will open up, I think, another.
During the holiday season.
That'd be great, esp- especially that, that frees up that Tuesday night for a potential large overview meeting as well.
When do we have to designate a representative or the town manager?
Don't.
We got, we got an email, I think, today.
Yeah, I saw the email for that.
Uh. Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry.
I wasn't.
Yeah, we got an email today.
Oh, did it go out to town meeting members?
What?
Does this email?
Well, the email was to town meeting members, but it had a list, it had a list of who, who was comprising the, uh, committee.
Yes.
And it included a, a planning board member.
Well, maybe you guys could talk about that tonight and decide who wants to do it.
No, I mean, I'd be interested in the, that, maybe somewhere else is interested as well.
Yeah, I was thinking, Paul, I don't know if you're interested, but since you're on your first time.
I think your resume is probably gonna go beyond April.
No, it's not, I think it's gonna, they want to make a diff, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because you're not biased, right, you're, you're leaving the board and you've been around for a long time, and I think you would possibly.
I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, plus, if it goes beyond, you could, we'd be happy to have you stay.
You could then fall into the designee role, if we need to go for, for another month or two.
The sheet that Louise Miller attached to the email said, planning board designate who is a member.
Yeah.
So.
That's our, you're a member, you're a member now.
I'm a member now.
They're supposed to have.
I can make a motion that, Paul.
If it goes beyond April, it becomes a question of, um, whether or not I can stay on it.
Well, I vote, I vote for now that you're a planning board member.
Don't we say it's between five and nine people by the, by some sort of bylaw somewhere, we can, we can make it work.
I, 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 I've moved that, Paul, be our, I've moved that, Paul, be our designate.
No, something, sorry, I don't.
You're worried about that, Paul?
No, I'm, I'm not worried about it, I'm, I'm just raising the issue, but some people think that, um, that that committee should, should, should be done with its work by, by the election in April anyway.
Are you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the intention.
Yep, and we can cross that bridge when we come.
Yep.
Okay, the motion's been made, made for Paul, anyone second it?
Second.
Okay, so motion, Marty, second, aye, Justin, all of you say aye?
Aye.
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 Oh, so it's unanimous, okay.
I've been volunteered again.
Volunteered again.
Gene's still volunteering.
I think you jumped into that one, you jumped into that one, Paul.
So one last thing, I know we only have correspond, we have correspondence, um, from Louis Wolfson.
Of course.
Um, so that we received that, and then, I just want to remind everyone that, uh, um, that Alex sent out the list of workshops, and there's still some, there's a site plan review one from Monday, January sixth, special permit invariances for January eighth, and, um, writing reasonable and defensible decisions on January third key, and others, you know, in December, so.
I, I did the sub, I did the subdivision one this afternoon at five-thirty, and I'm doing the, the next one December.
Is that the one you came with the?
Yes, yes, I did, yes, it was, it was at the tail, it was at the tail.
You had it on in the car?
I'm probably.
Okay, so already, so anyway, well, if anyone's.
I'll have to look at the January ones, I couldn't make any of those.
Yeah, I have to, but December, but I thought, Adam, Adam said that we should look at it, and I agree with him.
Um, I just realized that on P E X, we probably dumped the gun in closing the hearing before you had a chance to read into the record the correspondence from the town boards that all said that they were fine.
I did, I acknowledged every single one of them.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah, including the Board of Health, which is the only one that had really a comment.
They had their, they had their.
They always have.
No, the test, yeah.
Our judge always has it.
Yeah, no, but it was good, no, no, I did it on purpose, I said it before, I asked for it.
Sorry, I missed it.
They are giving free sessions, if you, if you're interested, they are giving free sessions. Or like intro sessions.
Really?
Well, I, I didn't see that one.
From the website.
I didn't see that one.
Well, thank you, so motion to adjourn from anyone?
So, so, second it.
Oh, one more, you could adjourn, but I just, I want to figure out when we're gonna do the Zoom meeting, okay, so we, we can adjourn.
You made adjourn.
Okay, so motion from Justin, second from Marty, all of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.